This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, we now have quorum for Jefferson Township Board of Trustees meeting, so we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, this is Jefferson Township Board of Trustees Virtual Zoom Regular Meeting. It's Tuesday, June the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Time is seven eleven P M. Let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to have a moment in silence on our military firefighters, red workers, and sheriff deputies as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Ms. Edwards, would you give roll call, please?
Uh, Trustee McGuire.
Present.
Trustee Mann.
Present.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Okay, uh, Section Four, we do not have any minutes to approve. Okay, fiscal officers report.
Now, this was gonna be a budget meeting mostly. And I only had a meeting last week. I provided you a report and I provided you a financial. And that basically, the budget stuff, there's nothing else I have further to provide to you. I do want to again mention that we're having issues because the bills are sitting in the mailbox. And it would be nice if you guys could go in there at least once a week, probably twice a week, to sign the bills so that I can get them out and we make our deadlines so we're not charged late fees. We're not getting shut-off notices because they're in late because these bills do sometime come in with only a week's notice to get them paid back. So we need you to get in there at least once, if not twice a week, not once every two or three weeks. Because also besides the point of view not getting paid, we also, I also have to wait once I send the bills out to the departments decide to send me their appropriation for those bills. So that takes some time too. The process takes a good week or two, even though we don't have it and we need to somehow figure out how we can speed that process up. So I wanted to point that out. I also wanted to let the trustees and the community know that if at any time they would like to understand a little bit more about the budget process, they can always call me. We can meet in my office. And we can discuss what they want to hear, you know, what concerns they have, or how the budget process works. Because we don't have time in the meetings to do a discussion on any of that. So you're welcome to give me a call, set up a meeting with me and I can be in the office and we can discuss the budget or the process. Um, other than that, um, I don't think there's anything else right now. I mean, there is, but we won't discuss that yet.
Thank you. Trustees, would somebody like to make a motion to pay the, the bills and the warrants?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the physical officer's report, pay the warrants and the bills and any other financial stuff that needs to be taken care of.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Roll call, please.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin.
You're, you're welcome. Yes.
Okay, we're back to old business. Um, trustees, if there isn't any objection, I'd like to go back to our discussion from the budget meeting. Could Chief Wright come back into the meeting? Or Mr. Wolf, do you have what you need to continue that discussion? Because I don't see where he walked back in.
Yes, we, we can work together and, and, and come up with what we talked about. So do you want to start with fire or start with the general fund?
Uh, let's continue. Trustees, do you want to continue with the discussion on fire since that's where we left off?
Yes.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Nod.
Let's go ahead and finish bar.
Okay. All right, so, um, the fiscal officer Tracy Edwards is right. Um, what she was saying about the, the equipment and the tools, or it's called repairs and maintenance, uh, two-one-one, two-two-zero, three-two-three, zero-eight-zero-zero. But the previous chief and the current chief wanted to break down those expenditures to know what we're spending on parts, spending on labor. So those line items were intentionally budgeted so we could keep an eye on how much was going out for either one instead of a lump sum repaired under fleet. Uh, the biggest thing is we're tracking the cost of labor. The city of Dayton Garage is very, very high on their labor costs. And we've been looking and, and we've found a couple alternatives that were looking at their labor costs. So we, that's why that was set out as a separate line item. The concern. Go ahead.
I understand that they have another program in the fire department that already breaks up the labor and if I, if I remember correctly, they have another program, a break step out for them?
They, they do have it internally, but it's not part of the record and, and they, and Chief, and I wanted to make sure that it was part of the record. So when anybody would say that you're overspending in labor with a vendor, we can point to those numbers and actually make that determination yes or no. Without having that termination, then you have to go to a secondary software which is not U A N supported. And, and, and so that's why that line item was set up that way. Um, so, so trustees, uh, I think there's enough money there for Chief's concerns on that line item. Uh, that's two-one-one, one-two-two-zero, three-two-three, zero-eight-zero-zero. But my suggestion is, is that either this year or when we rebudget next year, we, we populate those other two numbers with more money. And not lump sum them into fleet ma- maintenance because you kind of want to know what you're spending on your engines versus your medics, uh, or your chief vehicles. You want that split out so you can manage that money tighter.
Mr. Wolf, in the previous years, that was, um, like kept in that line and then have those fleet parts and fleet maintenance where depleted in that line was used as a feeder line to feed in to those, um, things. So it was never really originally taken directly out of that line. It was always used as a feeder, so it was done that. Um, but this year, there was a voice to me that, um, they didn't want to, um, the fire didn't want to break them out because they already had that program. And that they could track it that way if there was a question that came up, so.
Well, that, if that's what, Tracy, if that's what they want to, at the end of this year, we'll line item those to zero. And not put any fund into those accounts if that's what they want. But that wasn't what Mr. Mann and I and Chief Wright met three times and discussed, so.
Well, okay, well, then if that's the case, they didn't pass it on to those of us who work the budget. And if that's the case, we need to have something that tells us we need to do that because we, we didn't have any direction other than, you know, what we were told and none of, none of those three told us
Well.
that we should do it that way. So I understand, I understand that that's the way you want it, but it needs to be communicated to those of us who do the budget.
Well, we do the budget together every fall.
Well, I'm saying when we pay the, oh, I'm sorry, I used the wrong word, for those of us who pay the bills.
Okay. So the determination of the budget trustees are you. And you vote on those budgets and we have those department meetings in October, November to go through these specific items. So I have marked the record to go through this at the end of two thousand twenty-one with you. So whether we do them or another can be made. So since Chief isn't here with us, I would say that. I don't believe that we need to do any transfers in that area. Um, there was another line item down at the pod.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Give me that, uh, account number one more time.
Yeah, it's two-one-one-one, two-two-eight-zero-zero.
Okay, now, all that account you're talking about, they only have spent five thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents this year.
Uh, correct.
And they, they have eighteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and eighteen cents.
These are correct.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
That's where they can, that's where they can pay the bills from.
And the reason, Mr. Mann, the reason why there's only been that much is because once those other two lines, um, two-one-one, two-two-zero, three-two-three, oh, eight oh one, and three-two-three, oh, eight oh two, one got to a hundred percent, it was determined that we wouldn't transfer anymore out of the three-two-three, oh, eight oh oh into those funds anymore. There wouldn't have been any, but there wouldn't have been any spend out of that line because it was used that line, that oh-eight oh oh was a feeder line. And there wouldn't have been any spend out that line. But instead of doing all the transfer, we just started using it out there and they're tracking it in another program. So that's why those numbers are the way they are.
So what program are you referring to, Tracy?
I'd, you'd have to ask the fire department because I don't know the pro- software program. This is just by what I was told by the chief.
Any more questions about that, trustees? All right, so if we go down to the next arrow that, uh, Ms. Edwards had, had put on the sheet to look at, uh, if you look at fourth line item from the bottom of page eight of twelve, line item two-one-one-one, two-two-zero, four-nine-zero, zero-seven-zero-zero. Um.
That might be not critical, um, because it's fifty-one percent, but I just thought because of the rate we've been spending on uniforms and the people we've been hiring, I mean, I just need to kind of watch it. It's not way above fifty percent and neither was the one you skipped up there on the telephone. But we just need to watch that one. We, we probably don't need to add any money on those lines currently. Just want you to be aware that they're above where they should be at this point in the month.
And I'm glad you pointed that out. Um, that will come into discussion when we talk about the Corona's fire, the CARES Act money later, uh, trustees. So mark that as a point of interest for the fire department in the future. Um, I don't see anything else in the fire budget that you have highlighted as a, as an issue, uh, Ms. Edwards.
Page nine, it's not really, uh, I don't think, if I'm correct, and I'll have the fire to verify this, but I think they've already done their S C B A bench testing. Um, I think that, so that, so that means that eighty-nine percent is okay. And then the same thing with the motor rotor loan, we only pay it once a year, so that one's not significant and it's already been paid. Other than that, that's all that I am seeing critical right now.
Make a, make a note, trustees, uh, just to, uh, piggyback on back what Ms. Edwards told you. The last line item she discussed, a radio, this is the last payment on the, on the buyout agreement. We have no more years left.
I think we have next year.
I, I was told during our budget period that this was the year, but I'll check that, Tracy, okay? I thought this was the final year.
I mean, I could.
The new radios or the old radios?
The new ones.
Okay.
Uh, they, well, the green, you know, the green ones, the portables that were born under Chief Sack. Uh, okay, so, um, at this point, uh, we've completed the, the fire department concerns. Um, if there's any more question about fire, please ask and we'll try to, um, Ms. Edwards and I will try to answer.
Trustees, do you want to continue with the rest of the budget discussion while we're here or do we want to stop at this point and move back to another meeting?
Um, can I say that, um, I have a record that the, the ending date is twenty-twenty-two on the motor rotor lease?
Okay.
Um, I mean, it may not be accurate, but that's what I have. It started in two thousand sixteen. Yeah, I mean, it was started in two thousand sixteen and I would think that would be five years, but that's six years, so, you know, maybe it didn't get the first payment. I'd have to look, see if our first payment was in two thousand sixteen. If so, then it would be, this would have been the last ever. If not, then next year would be the last payment.
So, uh, is that something you have in your office that would show that or is that fire department?
I'd have, no, well, I would, well, they would probably have it in the fire department, but I'd have to go through the U A N back to two thousand and sixteen and then track how many times we paid.
That'd be nice, that'd be nice to know come this fall, you know, uh, for budgeting purposes, um, Ms. Edwards. So, thank you for that. Um, the only thing I want to, uh, say before you, you do anything, Jim, is we do have to address the salaries as Ms. Edwards said in the work session for the zoning officer and the code enforcement officer. So someone, sometime tonight, we do have to address that, no matter where agenda.
Now, those are, uh, basically resolutions we need to vote out?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then.
So you can come back to it if you'd like to.
Okay, once we get to, um, resolutions, we'll address those. So you've got, uh, do you have those organized and ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, trustees, do you want to continue the budget discussion and finish up what we have here? Or are we at a good stopping point?
I will let, uh, you guys decide.
Mr. McLaughlin, do you have any budget items you want to keep going and finish up what's prepared for tonight or do you want to move on?
Move on.
Mr. McLaughlin, can you hear us?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. Move on.
Okay, we'll backtrack to old business. Uh, updates on the development of specs for the ordering of the new engine tanker. Do we have any updates on that?
Evidently, the chief is not here, but, um, the final paperwork is being typed up that I must say, uh, we'd be ready to send that out unless something major happened, uh, at the next meeting, we can, uh, pace that.
So this is.
Let me ask Mr. Wolf. Is, is, that's the only thing we need to put, to finish this up, correct?
Yes, uh, your committee had met last week, you know, yourself, the fire chief and other committee members, and you are working on your specs to update them, uh, from the, the generic specs that were drawn up by the Dayton Fire Department that helped you. Um, and, and those adjustments you've asked of the committee to be done, uh, by that, uh, that vendor. And so they are adjusting that spec. When the spec is ready, it'll be sent out to all three trustees. And if you approve that spec, then, then I can move forward with the R F P. To advertise for, uh, for proposals from vendors around the United States. But I can't do the request for proposal process without the specs being completed.
So who is all, what's name, what is the names of the other two committee members, uh, on this committee?
You don't have to ask the fire chief because I, I, I do not have that list in front of me.
Mr. Mann, you in the meetings, Mr. Mann, you in the meetings, what's, what's names the other two members?
Mr. McLaughlin, you won't believe this, but I, uh, I know them, but I, I can't call your name. I will get their names and let you know, uh.
Okay.
I'll, I will call the chief at this meeting, so.
And so who's, and then who is the contractor that you're dealing with for the R F P?
Uh, Mr. Wolf is gonna send it to the, uh, have it sent out to all certain vendors. I don't know what vendors yet.
So who's picking that, who's picking that list of vendors?
Oh, you don't pick li- a list. You advertise it in the media, the newspaper, the trade journals, and you, and you stay completely out of it because you cannot pick one because you may have excluded another.
Okay.
So, and, so just like all other R F Ps that we have done, you, you have to put it in the newspaper.
Okay. That's close, yeah.
So, so to answer your question, Mr. McGuire, um, I'm just waiting for that spec to come to me so I can carry out the process for the trustees.
Good. Trustees, any other old business tonight?
Do we have the, uh, is, is the Calumet Center Room ready? The table's been moved. Is that stuff ready to go for the next meeting?
The room's been cleaned out, but the, the furniture has not been moved from the firehouse to the Calumet.
That same as it was then, okay. That same as it was, simple answer.
Yeah, you asked, uh, to have it done by July sixth, so it will be done.
Any other old business? Okay, let's move on to new business.
Do we make, do we make any progress on the, uh, door swipes and the locks and all that stuff that, uh, that mess up any, so you, you blamed it on the county. I didn't, I didn't talk to the county, but you blamed it on the county. We made any progress on getting the security system upgraded and finished?
The county has not got the system ready yet.
Okay. And, um, have we made any progress on paying, uh, some employees that didn't get paid because of COVID? Uh, several months back, we had some employees that never got paid. Have we made any progress on getting those employees paid?
Legal counsel is working, uh, on that issue. And we have a meeting tomorrow, uh, with, uh, two employees about it. And we can't discuss any more than that because it's H R.
Any more old business?
Move on.
Didn't you say move on?
Yes, I did.
I thought you were getting ready to say something else. I missed that. All right, new business. Uh, we talked about the adjustments needed for the two thousand twenty-one budget. Mr. Wolf, can you just give us a quick rundown on what we need to vote out tonight?
Yes. Okay. So the first line item that we need to address is one thousand, one-two-zero, five-nine-nine, three-zero-zero-nine. That is for the indigent burial. And I'd ask the trustees to approve the transfer of two thousand dollars from line item one thousand dash one-two-zero dash three-six-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero. And one thousand, one-two-zero, dash three-six-zero, dash three-zero-one-eight. Five thousand dollars. So a total transfer of seven thousand dollars from those two funds into one thousand, one-two-zero, dash five-nine-nine, dash three-zero-zero-nine, which is the fund for indigent burials.
So you gave the description of the money, where the money's going to. Can we get the description instead of just the numbers on the two accounts we're taking the money out of? Please.
Okay. The one thousand, one-two-zero, three-six-zero um, is, zero-zero-zero-zero is contracted services. Two thousand dollars. Nothing's been spent and we do not need that line item for two thousand twenty-one. Plus, indigent burials is a contracted service. But I'd like to transfer that to the indigent burial so we can better follow the expenditure for what that money was than generic being contracted services. The second line item is one thousand, one-two-zero, three-six-zero, three-zero-one-eight. Um, I'm sorry, I apologize. That should be correction, three-zero-one-nine. Three-zero-one-nine, and that's the cemetery record creation. Uh, we're not doing that project this year. We even talked about it in the budget meetings that this is going to be another year that we can't do it. That's five thousand dollars in that fund from that one thousand, that's one-two-zero, three-six-zero, three-zero-one-nine. Total of seven thousand, and that should take care of us for indigent burial. I have an indigent burial, um, uh, invoice that was received today and I cannot submit it for payment without having money into that line item and at the present time, we do not have enough. And I anticipate more indigent burials between now and into the year than we had during COVID.
Why? Got a reason why?
Um, we have people now out and about. When COVID was going on, everyone, according to the studies I've seen, stayed inside. Yes, you had people with COVID that were passing, but what I understand is everybody's out and about now, which creates situations where people may not look after their indigent friend or family or whatever it might be. So that all the different, uh, trade journals are, are, are showing friends. And I want to make sure we don't run out of money before March of two thousand twenty-two.
Mr. Wolf.
We're not spending that money. We're just encumbering it except for when we do incur an indigent burial because none of us know what that, when that's gonna happen.
Mr. Wolf, what, how much is, um, the bill that you're holding right now?
Uh, I believe it's seven, or something like seven ninety-five or eight, I think it's seven ninety-five. So that'll allow us for ten burials between now and then. And you can always transfer this fund, Mr. McLaughlin, to, you know, some money out of there to another fund if we don't, if we see that we're not using it all. So that's the first resolution that I ask you to approve.
Okay, well, so, Tracy, are we on resolution twenty-one dash zero-two-eight?
Yes.
Okay. All right, set up the next transfer, Mr. Wolf.
Right, transfer, um, this, uh, applies to the zoning officer's salary. We're gonna transfer funds to one thousand dash one-three-zero dash one-nine-zero. dash one nine zero dash zero four zero zero.
Going into this account?
Going into that account, and I'll repeat that when I'm done. Um, now, here's where I would, I would propose that you bring the money from, transfer the money from. One thousand dash one three zero dash three six zero dash zero four zero zero. And the description on that is um, contracted service, zoning director, planning. Since we no longer have Mr. Calligan, who was a contractor employee, we have a total in that account of sixteen thousand eighty-seven fifty. I propose that we only transfer seven thousand out of that account. Seven thousand out of one thousand, one thirty dash three six zero dash zero four zero zero to the account of one thousand dash one three zero, one nine zero, zero four, zero zero. That's transfer number one. Transfer number two would be one thousand dash one three zero, three one nine, um, dash zero 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 zero. And the description on that is other professional technical services. We had talked in all of our budget meetings that involved zoning that we were trying to put away some money to redo or refresh our zoning code to, uh, improve the code enforcement code. Um, and we set aside forty thousand. So I asked trustees to transfer forty thousand dollars making the line item zero for one thousand dash one three zero dash three one nine dash zero 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 zero. The last line item, transfer number three, part of that transfer, uh, because it's in the job description of the-
Mr. Wolf, you want to transfer the whole forty thousand?
Yes.
To, um, to the zoning code. So you want seven and then number two is forty thousand?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead with number three.
No, no, you don't have to apologize. It's clarity. And the last line item, because stormwater management is part of the zoning code now, uh, and we have the new job description includes stormwater responsibilities for the zoning officer. I, I, I would like to transfer one thousand dollars from one thousand dash one nine zero dash three six zero dash I want to say zero one oh five. Let me make sure I'm right. Zero one.
Yes.
Yeah, zero one oh five, one thousand dollars from the stormwater program.